Time is 6:00 PM. Council City of Denison now convenes in a raising session. Tonight's edification will be given by Reverend Dela Williams from Virginia Point United Methodist Church.
Thank you. Councilmen and Councilwomen, let us go to the Lord in prayer. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, be with these councilmen and women, and certainly their families, and send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom and charity and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people of Denison through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Proclamation of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We do have two proclamations this evening. If folks from municipal court come forward, please. This is National Municipal Court Week. Everybody's got a week. This is y'all's special week, and we're glad to have you. I know that on behalf of the entire council, what the four of you have done over the last several years in really just streamlining the service that you provide to the citizens has really been remarkable, and it's a privilege for us to get to recognize you this evening.
Whereas the municipal court of the City of Denison, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, has existed since April of 1920, and whereas more people, citizens and non-citizens alike, come in personal contact with municipal courts all throughout the Texas court system, and whereas public impression of the entire Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, and whereas municipal judges and court support personnel have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, and whereas the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities, and whereas the municipal courts serve as the local justice center for the enforcement of law ordinances and fine only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of this community, therefore be it resolved that I Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Denison and entire city council, extend our appreciation to our City of Denison municipal judges and support staff for their vital services they perform on an everyday basis in the City of Denison. We hereby declare this week as Municipal Court Week in the City of Denison. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And we have one more of the participants from the Health Occupation Students of America who can come forward.
Welcome. I'm glad that you're here. Proclamation of the City of Denison, whereas the Health Occupation Students of America, future health professionals, is a career and technical student organization for high school, and whereas HOSA serves as a pipeline of future health professionals, and whereas it provides a strong foundation for preparing tomorrow's healthcare professional through skill development, leadership opportunities, and community services, and whereas the health and science education and HOSA support and encourage students whose interests lie pursuing a healthcare career, whereas also that HOSA promotes the development of responsible citizenship, personal integrity, and compassion for humanity. Now therefore, I Jared Johnson is mayor and on behalf of the city council of the City of Denison, Texas, to hereby proclaim the week of November 1st through the 7th as National Health Occupation Students of America's Week in the City of Denison.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Consider item number three, consent agenda.
Move for approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second. Having motion from councilmember Gott, second from councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, A, Public Hearings, Zone Case 1015 West Crawford Street. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Not for your review, consideration is a rezoning request. Applicant is interested in rezoning 1015 West Crawford from two-family district to multifamily one district. The applicant would like to construct a single-family dwelling as well as a garage with an apartment unit. So to make it right with the zoning, it would have to be multifamily. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request at their October meeting and recommended disapproval. There were concerns related mostly to parking in the neighborhood. So recommend that you hold a public hearing and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Before naming address, please, for the record.
Curtis Tarrell, 1015 West Crawford. Mayor and members of the council, I am here to make a request concerning the permission to build a guest apartment at the rear of the lot in connection with the new home. It doesn't seem like an unreasonable request, since it is zoned for two-family, as it is. I understand, but there's a technicality of a common wall. I understand that. Directly behind 1015 Crawford, the property is owned by my daughter and son-in-law. 1020 Chestnut is the address. They have a guest apartment, which has served as living quarters for Helen Hogan for a number of years, which is my son-in-law's mother. So I would like to have an apartment, as I say, a guest apartment, to accommodate members of the family and guests from time to time. There you see, that's the front of the property right there in Brick Hall. On the right is 1009, and on the left is 1019. The lot is, I could say, empty now. Home burnt there several years ago. At the zoning meeting, there was two for and two against, just tied. The deciding vote fell to the chairman, Chris Spiegel. The very next day, on the sidewalk outside this building, Mr. Spiegel had a conversation with me. We just come across each other. He says, "In my heart of hearts, I wanted to approve it." But he said it was timing, bad was timing, since on the agenda that same evening, that same morning, that same day, was a person with a commercial zoning request for multifamily. I'm not interested in any commercial, just two-family or a guest apartment, that's all it is. It doesn't seem like an unreasonable request. Like I say, right behind me is exactly what I'm asking for, and it is zoned properly, multifamily.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tarrell? Thank you, sir. There might be some of them. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being known that public's hearing is closed?
Okay. Okay. So walk through the parking issue. So this is a small lot.
It is, and in two points, Mr. Tarrell mentioned, we had another case that went to Planning and Zoning Commission that was a similar situation, that is, a single-family home with a garage apartment. It was Bond in Fairbanks. The commission denied the request. The F Penn chose not to bring it forward to the city council. To make it work, the technical requirements, it's zoned two-family, and two-family, the structures have to be attached, so they're detached, which is why we have to do the multifamily. The lot, we just can't make it work, two-family. So he's proposing a garage apartment with a kitchen facility, which makes it, that's the distinction, that makes it a separate unit, and that's why through the zoning, we have to go to the multifamily.
Okay. So it's, right now, it's a zoned multifamily?
It's zoned two-family duplex.
duplex.
Correct.
The traditional duplex.
Correct.
Can you fit a duplex along this property?
Yes.
Was that yes?
Yes. You could. That's not our desire.
Okay.
May I speak to the parking issues?
Please, please come forward.
We have an alley. We have a driveway in the front. It would be constructed as a pull-through, as a drive-through. We could, if we had to, we could park six cars on the lot. So that's all I have to say about parking. So parking is not an issue for this lot.
David, any issues there for a drive-through like that, that goes from the front of the property to an alley?
No, sir. It's not common for it to be clear all the way through. Usually there's a fence or a garage, but I don't see why it wouldn't be functional. Alley is usable.
Alley is used every day, and there is a driveway in the front.
So, Gabe, walk me through the spot zoning. I mean, is it because of the technicality?
Yeah. So to answer the question, we could propose a duplex. You're probably looking at variances for parking, because your lot coverage, I don't see how you can make it work. I mean, we could with a variance approval, but the property Mr. Tarrell mentioned behind is on an island. That's the only multifamily zoning in that area. You have single-family 75 surrounding, and then this pocket is zoned two-family, but they're mostly single-family homes there. So it's kind of an oddity with our residential zoning districts in that area.
And then the case that you mentioned on Bond Street and...
Bonded Fairbanks, yes.
Was that zoned multifamily? Someone being a garage?
That was the exact scenario. It was zoned two-family, and he was requesting a multifamily, because he wanted to rent out the garage apartment unit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So according to the plans here, showing a carport, it's a drive-through to get access to second carport behind back. If somebody's parked, or two cars are parked at the first carport, how does that access? Somebody get out of the second back? It's a driveway, he goes around on through?
Yes, sir. The alley is used by most of the neighbors on that block.
Because they hear on the picture, it doesn't show like the driveway actually can carry on through the alley, but the planning of carport to go all the way through.
Correct.
So, Gabe, if the garage was attached to the house and had the garage apartment unit, does that change things? Or is it still because you had to say, "This other kitchen"?
Correct.
How many approvals and disapprovals did we have pulled onto? Because one of these looks like a disapproval, because it was crossed out, but couldn't tell if they're highlighting approval or...
So there was 23 in the notification area, which is 200 feet. There was four approvals and two disapprovals.
And the disapprovals, one, if I recall, they just didn't want the house built there?
One of the disapprovals, they noted traffic impacts in the area.
Mr. Tarrell, you live there today?
I live with my daughter, 1020 Chestnut.
Okay. So at this property then...
It's a vacant lot.
Right. Is it your plan to live there?
Yes.
To use it as a commercial property?
No, sir. It's a residence with a guest apartment, identical to what my daughter has, which has served as a residence for her mother-in-law for many years.
David, as a clarification on that driveway situation, this is a little bit different than a driveway, because this is, the way this picture's drawn, it would literally be, you've got overhanging of a house that you're driving under, like, yeah, and then another one. Does that change your comments versus it being an open driveway, yeah, with nothing above it?
I have not seen anything akin to that, like that anywhere, but I do believe if you have a carport, it's there for a reason, it's like a loading zone, or it's a stationary cover for a car, so...
So is that...
Well, I just think you're probably going to have a car parked there, and you would have, some folks would come in from the back on the alley, and some would come in from the street. It would not be normally driven straight through.
Okay. Wanted to, with the current zoning, that Mr. Tarrell could construct a single-family home with a garage, just minus the apartment. So you'd be free to do that.
Say that again.
So with the current zoning, the two-family, Mr. Tarrell could construct the home and just a garage, minus that apartment unit, and be fine, and be with allowable use.
Okay. So he could build the look, it'd be...
Correct. Build the garage, just not that apartment.
And these are pictures of what this place will, this is what your place will look like, based on these pictures?
Judd or Courtney, either one, on the spot zoning, in a situation like this, that really probably can make a case for why it makes sense, what kind of exposure on the spot zoning?
As a suggestion, one of the risks we run with rezoning it just to a spot zone, multifamily, is that whatever happens, he decides not to build what's shown here, it's still zoned multifamily, and somebody could put a multifamily structure there that's different than what he's showing. So there's risk that runs in that. I think if we like the product that he's trying to put up, which is nice, it's adding some new construction to a neighborhood that needs it, there may be a way in the two-family zone, we'd have to do like a code amendment or something, but not, for a two-family, not to just allow duplexes, but accessory apartments, similar to what he's proposing, because it's really, that's really what he's proposing, is a primary structure with an accessory apartment that just happens to be detached.
Right.
So if, that may be an option. I prefer instead of doing a spot zone, to handle it through conditional use or a variance option, if we can find a way to make it work. But rezoning it's multifamily, again, we just run some risk. Again, he's probably going to do what he says, but if it's multifamily, it's multifamily, and they could do a whole bunch of different other things there.
Sure. So under the conditional use concept or something similar, then we really have narrowed down what you can do with that. And then on the conditional use, does that go from property owner to property owner, or not?
Unless it's approved otherwise, unless you say for this conditional use expires when property changes hands, or something like that. But I think, again, I'd say we try to structure the two-family zone with a conditional use that would allow accessory apartments, not just duplexes. I think that may be an option to look at.
So to get there, because to me, I think it fits right in with the look of the neighborhood, obviously. I don't feel great about the spot zoning, so go ahead.
But Mayor, my comment about, I do have a comment about spot zoning. Regardless of the reason you might want to do it, it's still illegal. It's not something we are supposed to do. So I think Judd's comments are well-taken, that we may need to look at another way to be able to get this project done without spot zoning this particular lot.
Okay. So would the appropriate action then be for us to table this, or just deny and then have Mr. Tarrell work with you guys to figure out how that might look?
Denying this. If you don't want to do the spot zoning, then you need to deny, and then have Mr. Tarrell work with staff to find another way to get this done.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a great product, and I do think we need to figure out a way. I think as having an ancillary apartment is very different than, you know, than a second residence, where, so I do think we need to look as a policy decision to correct that in the code, to make sure that, because this is a really great-looking product. I mean, I'd be proud to have this next door to me, so I think he's done a good job. We just need to make sure we can figure out how to do it, and make it where it's not so burdensome.
Motion?
Make a motion to deny the multifamily use for this site.
Second. Having motion, councilman Beck, second, councilman Hanley, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. So Mr. Tarrell, you know who the contacts are here?
Okay.
They'll work with you to try to figure out how to...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
In a way that's across the board, that I think, appreciate your interest. Consider item 5A, establishment of police recruitment incentive.
Mayor and council? As you may or may not know, historically, in the last few years, you have police agencies around the country been looking for options in helping them with their recruitment, including bonuses or hiring bonuses paid to new hires. The results of that have been, I guess, not what they expected. With a lot of agencies that have paid these hiring bonuses, as it's turned out, the new employees, a lot of times, have taken the money, and as they got all the bonus money coming to them, and they leave and go someplace else for a different department. What we're proposing is a little bit different. It's centered based on our current employees for recommending qualified and quality employees to our department, and then through the process, the steps that it will take through that process is have this money paid to the employee that is making a referral, not the new hire. The new hire would not be subject to any monies at all through this process. Our proposal is that if an employee, if any employee refers an applicant to the department and they're hired after the background process, and that employee receives $250. Language in number two, if you believe that under the financial consideration, is a little bit different than what we had in mind. It says that it's $250 one-time payment, when a non-certified candidate passes the police academy. And then if it's a certified candidate, applicant, that $250 paid to the employee for passing the field training. What we'd like to do is be consistent in all the applicants would have to pass the field training program. It's not based on the academy, so it will be based on certified or uncertified. That's another $250. And then, once this recruit makes it all the way through probation, which is a year or two, year and a half, depending on whether they're certified or not, then they're finally paying $500 to the employee who referred the applicant. I think total benefits to the, to a successful employee that referred an applicant would be about $1,200, including benefits. This is not something that happens a lot. It's, the reasoning behind this is to get our employees interested in the recruiting process as well, and a lot of us know quality people out there, and for whatever reason, we just haven't referred them over the years. So that's kind of the reasoning behind it. Plus, it gives them a vested interest to see that the person that they refer, that they put their name on, is successful and becomes a good police officer for our department. So that's kind of where we're coming from. We don't have a lot of openings every year. I think we average two to three. Due to some situations we've had, this year, we have four openings right now. We just tested recently. We've got to really give this, with real good quality on it. We hope to hire two or three off of that list, and I'm confident we'll be able to. So this, and plus, this process will take, like I said, it could be a year to a year and a half before all the money is paid back to the referring employee, so... I think that pretty much explains all of it. So if you have any questions or comments, be right here.
Just, I guess, one question. Do you get much, so in these positions, like you have four positions now, do you get much interest in someone who's an A and E or veteran from another force, or is this...
We do. We have provisions in our pay structure that they can come in at a higher rate of pay, level entry, for those that have, the first cutoff is they're certified and have zero, six months' experience, I believe, or zero to 18 months, I'm sorry. And then, and then if they have 18 months or more, then there's a higher pay level that they come in at. And our current list that we, our test, we just completed, we have two certified officers on that list, veteran officers.
Any discussion? Motion?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from councilman Hanley, second from councilmember Gott, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Consider item 5B, voluntary annexation is correct.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, we have a post-ordinance, but we'll annex some new property into the City of Denison. On September 21st, the council approved a resolution directing staff to move forward with the annexation, initiate the annexation process. Part of that was to hold two public hearings, which were held on October 5th, 2015, and tonight, the ordinance is up for consideration. So that's for you tonight. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Motion?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Having motion from councilman Hanley, second from councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion carries. Consider item 5C, pick action on health insurance, Ms. Lake.
Mayor and members of the council, when we were presented with our 2016 re-rate options for health insurance from TMA, we were shocked to see that the increase was in the double digits. And so with that information, and having done due diligence with the wellness program, and being a faithful client of theirs for many years, we felt like this was out of line and unacceptable. And so we entered into an agreement with Bryson Benefits, whose representatives are here tonight, in hopes to get a better rate, to allow them to negotiate on our behalf, and come up with some creative way to provide our employees with benefits that they can afford for themselves and their family. And so what we have to present to you tonight, what we are seeking your approval for, is two different plans. One would be a PPO, and one would be an HSA, both being high deductibles. But through Bryson's creative ideas, we're able to take the savings by buying those high deductible plans, and use those to buy down deductibles for our employees. And they're here, they can answer specific questions regarding the plans, if you'd like them to. We would not utilize any more than the 458 that you budgeted for our employees. And they're also able to offer us telemedicine with this package that would help our employees be able to seek, you know, health, healthcare over the phone when we're set in, would help reduce our claims, and going and using emergency room as their primary care. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions? This is, it's not unique to us, and the HSA with employers buying down, I mean, it's advantageous for the employees and, even today, the employer to help bridge that gap. I see it every day in my role.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Having motion from councilman Hanley, second from councilmember Gott, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion carries. Special thanks to Amy and, I guess, whoever else worked on this, who came to come up with a good solution for our employees. Thank you all. Council now going to executive session, sent to chapter 551 of the Texas State Government Code to talk about... Code, to talk about, contemplate a litigation, also talk about city's willingness to extend financial information for economic development, and also discussing commercial or financial informative information received on existing health services prospect. The time is 6:30. We go to executive session.